Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting for Tuesday, April 16, 2024. The time is now 7:09. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for March 19, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two social affair permit applications this evening. The first one is the Committee to Re-Elect Joseph P. Scarpelli Campaign fundraiser for Tuesday, April 30, 2024, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at 2:42 Chestnut Street. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
I abstain.
Second one is the Historic Restoration Trust of Nutley commemorating their 50th anniversary on Saturday, June 15, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 3 Kingsland Street with the rain date of Saturday, June 22, 2024. Need a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Let's go to reports. Commissioner Petracca, I have my public safety report, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill lists for April 16, 2024, public affairs, $77,175.61. Revenue and finance, $3,904,556.22. Public safety, $45,478.95. Public works, $53,916.54. Parks and public properties, $64,685.92. Water utilities, $17,089.15. Payroll for Tuesday, April 16, 2024, regular payroll total, $1,015,716.4. Overtime payroll total, $57,825.26. Total payroll, $1,073,541.30. Payroll for April 12, 2024, regular payroll total, $919,615.10. Overtime payroll total, $51,730.61. Total payroll, $971,345.71, for a grand total of $6,207,789.40.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills.
Public comment and agenda, my name is Soli. Would anybody like to here like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is TJ Legg. I'm a resident at 64 Alexander Avenue. Wanted to come this evening and thank and address a recent concern. Unfortunately, about a month ago, my house was burglarized. At 4:30 in the morning, three juveniles or two, maybe a third juvenile broke in our back door, popped open the lock, entered my home while we slept with our daughters in the house, stole the keys to a car, and ultimately made off with that car. Immediately that morning, the Nutley Police Department responded and responded in kind. I work with multiple police departments, and I could tell you that the police department did an extraordinary job. They were hands-on immediately that morning with detectives, sergeants, and lieutenants at the scene. And from rank down, immediately my neighbor, Director Petracca, was there for us as a neighbor and as your commissioner. And I could see that the leadership of the department was just, it was extraordinary. They contacted me every day, deputy chief, the chief's office, and ultimately they caught the, they caught the two juveniles who did this. They were hands-on for those first couple of days as it was an ongoing investigation because it took the better part of a couple of weeks to solve the crime. My saving grace is that my four-and-a-half-year-old had no idea what the heck was happening while five of your officers fingerprinted five parts of my living room, kitchen, and foyer. We never think it's going to happen to us. We had ADT installed about a month earlier because our neighbor is unfortunately another Nutley resident. Close friends were also in this similar situation. We never set the alarms until the night after the burglary. I say that to all of you to encourage your residents to do the same. But again, to more importantly, highlight the importance of a healthy, properly funded police department, one that is able to police, because your police department really did that. And it should be noted, I think it's a reflection of Mayor and Council. And as a resident, as somebody who has to continue to sleep in that home at night, I'm just really grateful to see that you guys answered the call when the time had to be there and ultimately solved the crime, caught the kids, and I say kids because they're two 17-year-olds. The third is at large, but unfortunately, they had a very, very long rap sheets. And I won't waste your time talking about bigger issues, but I, I think all politics is local, and I think seeing police departments that properly solve crimes and fight crimes is what we need. And I just thank you, and I thank your police department, most importantly. I just wanted to express that, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, TJ. Commissioner, like to...
I have to tell you, TJ, not too many people come here after their house was burglarized and say thank you, so I want to extend you and your family a big thank you again. I'll tell you the same thing I told you when it happened. I'm sorry that it did happen, but it is an epidemic, and I know that you and I talked about the bail reform, about these kids are out of jail before the cops are done with their reports. But I have to tell you, it's, 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 it's not just me. It's, we do have a fantastic police department, and for them to do the fingerprinting, not let it go, and follow up, and follow up, and following up. And my message to these bad guys are Nutley's just not going to tolerate that, and we will keep, continue to put the pressure on them. And I'm urging Trenton every day. I have a resolution on about the three-wheelers, these motorized bikes, a kid, a kid that's got killed in Clifton because these rules and laws are just too loose in this state, and it's the same offenders that we're catching all the time, and most of them are from out of town. So again, please tell Renee I said hello, and, and I'm sorry that happened, and thank you so much for speaking well of our department.
Director, if I may, nobody wants to be victimized. And I think that, you know, as somebody who's been a lawyer for almost two decades, I've unfortunately seen other things. And when the police department responds the way they did, it helps lessen the blow of that victimization. And I think that's part of the reason why I found the right thing to do, to be the comment, to express that, because it's to encourage that. That helps victims feel less victimized because, you know, it's if they get away with it, if they continue to feel that, you know, the police department did nothing, that's a further victimization. So I think it's to that point that, you know, made me find it, you know, a place to want to come and say something to you. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners? Let's move to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We have late-night voter registration occurring on April 23. To Tuesday, the Municipal Clerk's Office will be open until 9:00 p.m. for voter registrations. We have the late-night dog and cat license registration that will also occur on Tuesday, April 23, as well as on April 30. The Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 p.m. And then coming up soon, we'll have another DMV mobile unit coming, which is expected to be here on April 30 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You good? Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I would just like to shout out to the Italian Federation of New Jersey. They gave me an award for businessman of, award of the year. I was really looking for the Young Man Award, but I think that has come and passed, unfortunately. But I have to tell you, there were so many great people there. The Italian Police Society, Billy Chevelle was there, Claremas Hospital was there, and it's not about me, but it's about all those people who really deserve that award. They did unbelievable work during COVID, you know, and my store actually provided some food for Italian Police Society, and they delivered to all the hospitals and nurses. And it was just a great experience, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Congratulations, Al. That was a well-deserved award. I mean, sorry. Congratulations, Commissioner. That was a well-deserved. But I, I have two events I want to highlight coming up this Sunday at our, our farmer's market. We're doing our spring pause in the park event. There's going to be vendors there for, for your pets, and we encourage everyone to bring their pets, their dogs, their cats out, and it'll be a good time for everyone to interact and hang out with their, with their friends while they, they shop some of our local vendors. And also, on the kind of a similar note, on April 29, we're having our free rabies clinic from 4:30 to 8:30. If your, your cat or dog needs a rabies vaccine, we will vaccinate them for free, and that we're doing that in conjunction with the Finance Department. So you can get your, your, your pets vaccinated, and you can register them immediately right then and there. That's from 4:30 to 8:30, April 29. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have compost day on Saturday from 9 to 1. For those gardeners out there that would like some, some black gold to mix in with your garden, to get those fruits and vegetables moving. And as the Commissioner Kelly said, we have the farmer's market from 10 to 2 in parking lot seven on Sunday. And next week, we have electronics recycling on April 27 from 9 to 1. Commissioner Tucci, the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Commissioner Petracca, on your award.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Thank you so much.
This evening, we're going to do something that's a little bit out of the ordinary because typically what we do is we honor folks from Nutley or organizations that are from Nutley. But we have some outstanding friends with us this evening. We have Jerry Cole, who's a friend and just a great patriot in Essex County for as long as I can remember. All right? And he brought along and has introduced us this evening to some honorees of the Friendly Sons of the Shalali. And for those of you who are not familiar with the Friendly Sons, it's a group that's very similar to our Nutley Irish American Alliance, and we are very proud this evening. We have our president here, Deidre Hollywood. We have Barbara Moravsky, and we have Mary Fenyou with us from the Nutley Irish to support the Friendly Sons. We're just very happy and very pleased to have you with us this evening, and we're very honored to honor you. So having said that, I'd like to read this resolution and offer it on your behalf. Whereas on Saturday, April 27, 2024, the Friendly Sons of the Shalali Club Essex Division will be holding its 54th annual dinner and dance at the Hanover Manor. And whereas the Friendly Sons of the Shalali Club is an Irish-American cultural and social organization who work to preserve our Irish traditions and heritage and to share them with our communities. And whereas this year's honorees are Rick Dyer of West Caldwell, Steve Schaefer of Denville, and Barbara Hughes of Montclair. And whereas Rick Dyer has been a member of the Friendly Sons of the Shalali for over 10 years and served on several committees and is the financial secretary for the past seven years, he enjoys volunteering his time at the club and is always the first one to raise his hand for whatever is needed. Rick is being honored as the 2024 Man of the Year. Whereas Steve Schaefer is an active member of the Friendly Sons of the Shalali Club, along with other organizations that are dear to his heart, and is committed to giving back to society, particularly to the elderly and our veterans through volunteering, as Steve is being honored as the 2024 Shalali Man of the Year. And whereas Barbara Hughes feels at home at the Shalali Club, where she volunteers countless hours while serving on several committees, such as Save Our Shores, Children's Back-to-School Backpack Drive, Luck of the Puppet Adoption, and St. Baldrick's Child Cancer, and Barbara is being honored as the 2024 Friend of the Friendly Sons. And whereas those who enhance the well-being and vitality of their community and have shown a long and sustained commitment to honoring and preserving their culture have earned the recognition of this board, as well as the citizens of our community and throughout the state of New Jersey. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate Rick Dyer, Steve Schaefer, and Barbara Hughes, as well as recognizing the good deeds of the Friends of the Shalali Club as they are honored here tonight. I'm very proud to move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Gentlemen, ladies, please come up for a photo.
One, two, three. May make nice. That was for me. Okay.
Oh, I don't know if I want to use this pen. I'm using blue.
That hurts. It really hurts.
This is Bozo.
This is Bozo.
Wherever she is. Thank you, Mayor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a resolution tonight appointing Stephanie Santana the position of Acting Chief Financial Officer. Whereas NJSA 48:9-140.10 requires every municipality in the state of New Jersey to have a chief financial officer to be appointed by the municipality's governing body. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 48:9-140.13, when a vacancy occurs in the office of Chief Financial Officer, following the appointment of a certified municipal finance officer to that office, a person who does not hold a position of municipal finance officer certificate can be appointed a one-year term with reappointment of no more than two years to serve as the Acting Chief Financial Officer. Whereas the Director of Revenue and Finance has determined that Stephanie Santana has the qualifications and experience to hold a position and perform the duties of Acting Chief Financial Officer. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley is desirous of supporting this appointment, and Ms. Santana has agreed to serve in said position commencing on April 8, 2024. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 48:9-140.13, Ms. Santana's term of office shall be a one-year term as Acting Chief Financial Officer, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey to hereby appoint Stephanie Santana to the position of Acting Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Nutley for the initial one-year term commencing on April 8, 2024. And be it further resolved that Ms. Santana's initial acting term pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 48:940.10 will commence on April 8, 2024, and end on April 8, April 7, 2025. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye. Stephanie, you're already doing a great job, so we'll just continue to make sure you do it every day. Thank you for being here.
Commissioner Petracca.
I vote aye. I'd like to wish you all the luck in the world. My son's a financial guy, so I know that he understands this, so I hope you do. You can't put a price on safety, Stephanie. So think about that when you're doing the budget. Welcome aboard. I vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Welcome, Stephanie. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Welcome, Stephanie. Good luck.
Especially in public safety.
Stephanie, want to say a few words? You're good? All right. Hello, Esparat. How you doing back there? No? All right. Okay. Mr. Bruno?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a need to go propose session, discuss contract negotiations.
Need a motion?
Madam Clerk? Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss litigation and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved at a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters, within the exceptions provided for by statute, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The time is now 7:31.
Okay, are you, are you good?
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes.
Back on the record?
Thank you. The time is nine thirty-five.
Ordens, ordinances, introductions. Commissioner Petracca.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. This ordinance number is three five four nine. An ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of statute of nullity, chapter two-two-eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article seven, Section twenty-nine, titled Handicap Parking, to add to the location set forth. This is for one fifty, Hoyman Avenue, to remove it. I move that this ordinance be passed through a second reading in advertising, though he's not together with the notice required by law and the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners. Behold that it's second reading, which I believe is May twenty-first. May twenty-first, I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have five on for this evening. May is a very busy month. Uh, the first one I have on is Resolution Number ninety-three twenty-four, Melanoma Skin Cancer Detection and Prevention Month. Whereas more people are diagnosed with skin cancer each year in the United States, United States than all other cancers combined. Whereas each day two-hundred-sixty-seven cases of invasive melanoma are diagnosed in the United States, which means eleven individuals learn they have melanoma every hour. Whereas invasive melanoma accounts for one percent of all skin cancer cases, it is the least common but deadliest skin cancer. Whereas there will be two-hundred to two-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-forty cases of melanoma diagnosed in the United States in twenty-twenty-four. And whereas melanoma is the second most common cancer in those fifteen to twenty-nine years old, the high rate in this young population is thought to be related to UV damage from childhood sunburns and indoor training, indoor tanning, excuse me. Whereas having five or more sunburn doubles your risk for melanoma, research has shown that daily sunscreen use cuts the incidence of melanoma, deadliest form of skins cancer in half. Whereas the American Academy of Dermatology encourages everyone to perform regular skin self-exams to check for signs of skin cancer, about half, half melanomas are self-detected. And whereas when detected early, the five-year survival rate for melanoma is ninety-nine percent. Whereas melanoma is the most commonly associated with skin cancer, the cells called melanocytes, which produce the dark-colored pigment called melanin, are found in other places in our bodies as well, our hair, the lining of our internal organs, and our eyes. When it forms in the eye, it's known as ocular melanoma, or more specifically, uvial melanoma because it forms in the uvial tract of the eye. Now therefore, Board of Commissioners, in the township of Nolly County of Essex, do hereby proclaim May as Melanoma Skin Cancer Detection and Prevention Month, and encourage all residents to take necessary precautions and to prevent and or decrease the risk of melanoma and other skin cancers, and to seek out free skin cancer screening where available. Be it further resolved that residents are encouraged to support various national melanoma foundations with focus on awareness, detection, research, and patient support Be it further resolved that residents are encouraged to support various national melanoma foundations with focus on awareness, detection, research, and patient support services. The Mike Geltreuch Foundation is a local organization that supports those initiatives through their annual fundraiser, which takes place on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and nine, nine Nina's in the Park in Belva, New Jersey. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is resolution number ninety-four twenty-four, and this is for National Stroke Awareness Month. Whereas stroke is a medical emergency that occurs when blood flow to the brain is interrupted. And whereas stroke can happen to anyone at any time regardless of race, sex, or age. Whereas approximately seven-hundred-ninety-five-thousand people in the United States experience a stroke each year, that is, one person every forty seconds. And whereas risk factors include high blood pressure, high cholesterol, smoking, obesity, and diabetes. As whereas early action, seeking emergency treatment and recognizing the symptoms can be the difference between a full recovery and long-term disability. Whereas the FAST method can help spot a stroke and be the difference between life and death. F, face, ask the person to smile, is their face drooping? A, arms, ask the person to raise both arms, do you notice arm weakness? S, speech, ask the person to repeat a simple phrase, is the speech slurred or strange? T, time, if you see any of these signs, time to call nine-one-one right away. Whereas understanding the risk factors and making healthy lifestyle changes like staying physically active, eating healthy, and managing stress can help reduce your chances of stroke. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nully County of Essex State of New Jersey, at the month of May be, two thousand and twenty-four, be declared National Stroke Awareness Month, and encourage citizens of the Township of Nutley to learn the signs of a stroke as the sooner a patient receives medical treatment to lower the risk of death or disability. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is resolution number ninety-four twenty-four, for Mental Health Month. Whereas mental health is important at every stage of life from childhood to adulthood. Whereas it includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, which affects how we think, feel, and act. Whereas in February two thousand and twenty-three, twenty, twenty-seven-point-seven percent of adults in New Jersey reported symptoms of anxiety or depressive disorder, compared to thirty-two-point-three percent of adults in the United States. Whereas mental illness is a diagnosable as an acute or chronic conditions like depression, anxiety, schizophrenia, and or mood slash personality disorders. And whereas suicide was the twelfth leading cause of death among Americans and the fifteenth among New Jerseys in two thousand and twenty. Whereas connecting with people and being physically active, practicing mindfulness, and being kind to yourself could help you feel more positive and get the most out of life. Whereas the organization Mental Health America has chosen where to start as a two thousand and twenty-four theme, reminding individuals that the world is constantly changing, for better or for worse, and it can be overwhelming to deal with the world around you. Whereas while society is getting more comfortable discussing mental health, it can still be hard to know where to start. But with each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen involved in supporting prevention efforts, they're promoting mental wellness at the same time. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nully County of Essex State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim May as Mental Health Month, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the Township of Nully to recommit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental health illnesses at all stages. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Uh, the, we as a Board of Commissioners, uh, uh, four years ago now made Nutley a stigma-free town, that is a stigma associated with seeking help for mental health. There is no stigma associated with getting help. If you need help, ask for it, don't be afraid to ask, it's not a sign of weakness, it's a sign of strength. And we, we as a board fully support you seeking mental health treatment, uh, to help, help you with any issue maybe affecting, may, that may be affecting you, I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is resolution number ninety-six twenty-four. And this is a resolution, uh, designating the month of May as Asian, uh, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas approximately sixteen-point-six million Asian American and Pacific Islanders reside in the United States, making up approximately five-point-four percent of the United States population, and that by two thousand and fifty, Asian American and Pacific Islanders will make up nine-point-seven percent of the total United States population, over forty million people. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders represent over thirty countries and ethnic groups and speak over a hundred different languages. Whereas the month of May has been selected to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrant to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three, as well as to honor the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine, which upwards of twenty thousand Chinese workers helped to construct. The month pays tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the United States' history and are instrumental in its future success. Whereas the origin of Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month can be tracked back to the ninety-fifth Congress in nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen seventy-eight, when five joint resolutions were introduced proposing that a week in May be designated to commemorate the accomplishments of Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Whereas on March twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-nine, President Carter issued approximate, proclamation forty-six fifty, the first presidential proclamation for Asian and Pacific American Heritage Week. In this proclamation, President Carter spoke of the significant role Asian Pacific Americans have and have played in the creation of a dynamic pluralistic American society with their contributions to the sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. Whereas on May seventh, nineteen ninety, President George H.W. Bush issued Presidential Proclamation six-one-three-zero, designated May nineteen ninety as the first Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas AAPI Heritage Month, formerly known as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month until two thousand and nine, originated in nineteen ninety-two, when then-New York Congressman Frank Horton introduced the bill that called for the month of May to receive that designation, which came from the idea of former Capitol Hill staffer, Jeannie Jew, in the mid-nineteen-seventies, more than fifteen years earlier. Whereas the completion of, whereas, whereas the compilation of hate crime data published by the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism revealed that anti-Asian hate crime increased by three-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent last year compared to the year before, with New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and other cities surpassing the record numbers in two thousand and twenty. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nully County of Essex State of New Jersey, recognize May as Asian and American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, advancing leaders through innovation, and encourage all residents to come together as a community in solidarity against racism, and to celebrate the richness of Asian American and Pacific Islander communities, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Uh, the last one I have on for this evening is resolution ninety-seven twenty-four. I'm recognizing the month of May as National Nurses Month, and I want to, before I read it, I want to, uh, give a, a shout out to the nurses who, who work in the, the public health nurses, nurses who work in the Public Affairs and Health Department. They're tireless public, public, public health advocates, and they are tirelessly working for our benefit and keeping us all safe and sound. Uh, so I want to congratulate them on, on National Nurses Month as I read this resolution. Whereas registered nurses in the United States can constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, whereas the American Nurses Association as the voice for registered nurses in this country is working to chart a new course for health, a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative healthcare, and better utilization of all our nation's registered nurses, nursing resources. Whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients. And whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because the aging of the American population, emerging health challenges, and continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and explosive growth of home healthcare services. Whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. And whereas the, the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be increasingly important component of the United States' healthcare delivery system in the future. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nully County of Essex State of New Jersey, along with the American Nurses Association, recognize the month of May as National Nurses Month, celebrating the two thousand and twenty-four theme of Nurses Make the Difference, honors the incredible nurses who embody the spirit of compassion and care in every healthcare setting. Nurses make the difference as trusted advocates who ensure individuals, families, and populations receive quality patient care and services. Now therefore, be further resolved that National, National Nurses Week begins each year on May sixth and ends on May twelfth, Florence Night and Gail's birthday. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Before I vote, I would just like to say, after my wife spent a lot of time in Clarimass Hospital, being a nurse is really appalling, and what they do is unbelievable, I think they, that you can never even pay them enough because they're really, really special people, so I proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Mayor, one, one resolution left, it's, uh, uh, on behalf of the Board of Commissioner, Commissioners, it's a resolution authorizing the execution of the Affordable Housing Agreement and an amended Affordable Housing Spending Plan. Uh, the, the resolution is, uh, uh, I'll read into, uh, read into the record, record as written. Um, the highlights of the resolution, uh, address the township's affordable housing obligation for, uh, the gap period between the year two thousand and two thousand, uh, fifteen, uh, whereas we are, uh, working to, uh, uh, utilize land on, uh, the on-three property to construct a one-hundred-percent affordable housing development comprising, uh, sixty-five units, which satisfies our, uh, what is known as Mount Laurel Obligation. Uh, we are exempt, uh, from the, uh, upcoming, uh, round, uh, which starts in two thousand and twenty-five, which will cover the next ten-year period through, uh, twenty thirty-five, uh, as currently adopted by the state legislature. So if, for the foreseeable future, this addresses the township's obligation. As set forth in the agreement, the township has also agreed to provide additional funding, uh, out of the municipal housing, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, uh, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars. Uh, and this would come out of account T twenty-six two oh seven one oh one. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the mayor and municipal clerk are hereby authorized to execute the Affordable Housing Agreement with the developer in a form and content acceptable to council for the township amended to the amended Affordable Housing Spending Plan, which sets forth the dispersment to, uh, the dispersment be, and here's hereby approved in a form and content acceptable to the council of the township and the township's planner. And a copy of this resolution, as well as the Affordable Housing Agreement, shall be placed on file with the municipal clerk. Uh, and a notice, uh, if required, in accordance with local public contract law, shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Uh, Commissioner Evans, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think two points worth emphasizing is that this satisfies our Affordable Housing Obligation going forward for the foreseeable future, and that the, the funds that we're obligating is, is required, that we're required to set aside by the state, and we have very limited, you, we have very limited categories of use for these funds, and we will not be able to use them in the future, uh, unless there's another affordable housing project, and so we're designating these funds for that, that purpose. And at the same time, we also risk losing the funds from our accounts if we don't, uh, use them, it's a use them or lose them kind of thing, where's the state taking them? Uh, that, am I correct in that?
In part, uh, the, uh, funds, yes, are restricted for use for affordable housing purposes, one of which is for construction of new affordable housing, it's also usable for rehab purposes for qualifying residents, which is something that we have to do under a affordable, affordable housing rehabilitation program, which we have yet to deal with. Uh, yes, and these are restricted funds, uh, that are, are provided by, uh, when we have certain development in town, they provide a affordable housing development fee, uh, which goes into this trust. Uh, the, uh, other element of it is, yes, the, the, historically, if you don't use the funds, you could lose them. Uh, when the state of New Jersey shifted the obligation for affordable housing settlements to the courts, uh, they have not acted on, uh, the, uh, lose it aspect of that plan, and there hasn't yet been any disclosures to suggest a return to that activity. But having said that, this is a, a valid use of the funds to be removed from, uh, the trust fund.
Right, yes, you said it much better than me, I, that, that was my understanding, I, I think it's worth emphasizing that, those two points, and so I, I, I vote aye.
Yes, and, and as I had said, just to be for clarification, uh, this addresses our obligation, uh, which arose because of a gap, what they call a gap, uh, in addressing affordable housing between the year two thousand and two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we are, we were exempt from what they call the third round, which covers two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-five, and we remain exempt for the period that which will come in, which is just called the fourth round, which will be from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-five. So for the foreseeable future, yes, we're exempt.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Glad these two commissioners agree, I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Petracca. Whereas the township of Nully Department of Public Safety has an urgent need to make repairs to engine five, as it is out of service and needs to be repaired immediately to provide the continued health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Township Penali. Whereas FFI Appraisals LLC, thirty-four Wilson Drive, Sparta Township, has supplied a quote in the amount of ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-one dollars and twenty-five cents to repair the engine five in the timely manner, and whereas in accordance with the local public contract laws, forty-eight eleven dash six, titled Emergency Contracts, the Director of Public Safety has notified the purchasing agents in writing and emergency. And whereas funds are available on the account four dash zero one three one four two oh zero one, in the amount of ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-one dollars and twenty-five cents, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, that certification is attached to this resolution. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nully, authorizes this purchase order to be used to FFI Appraisals LLC, thirty-five Wilson Drive, Sparta, on an emergency basis in accordance with local public contract laws, forty-eight eleven dash six, at a total cost of ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-one dollars and twenty-five cents, I move resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
So this resolution, um, it's one hundred dash twenty-four, this is a resolution that, um, let's make sure. Okay, yes, this is a resolution about the ATVs, the kids on bikes, dirt bikes, riding through our township and all throughout the state, what kind of no penalties, so we are going to appeal this to Attorney General's Office. So a resolution requesting that the New Jersey Attorney General and New Jersey Legislature take immediate action to impose increased penalties for specific violations of Title thirty-nine related to two and three-wheel motor vehicles. Whereas one of the most important obligations of local government is to provide the safety for the public from criminal acts. Whereas it is the responsibility of local government to use both proactive and reactive law enforcement methodologies to fulfill such obligation, whereas law enforcement methodologies are being challenged by unlawful, irresponsible, and reckless driving of ATVs, dirt bikes, and other types of two and three-wheel vehicles in a manner of this placing the lives of citizens of Nutley, New Jersey, in danger. Whereas the Nutley Police Department is doing what it can to address the criminal acts within the framework of the policy set by the New Jersey Attorney General Office and New Jersey State Legislature. And whereas it has become clear to our governing body, law enforcement officers, and public at large, that the policies not be, the policies now in place are not working in the best interest of the public safety, and therefore, enabling offenders to commit such acts without fear of prosecution. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully County of Essex State and New Jersey do hereby call upon the New Jersey Attorney General's Office and the New Jersey Legislature to immediately take action to assist in our efforts to address this problem by passing legislation and impose policies that increase penalties and fines to include imprisonment of guilty offenders, and stiff fines for the adult and juvenile offenders, and the parents, guardians of the juvenile offenders. So before I move this, this is just my first step, as, as your Public Safety Director, because my next resolution is going to talk about the bail reform. However, during the winter, we had approximately two or three hundred of these quads, dirt bikes, go down Washington Avenue. And you know what the cops were able to do? Nothing, because they're not allowed to chase unless they meet a criteria that is from here to Belva. So I just, um, did a podcast on Nutley Post, and we talked about this a little bit. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, a petition to the parents. Because unfortunately, I even know some of these kids that are driving the bikes, these dirt bikes and stuff, because my one son is still in high school. I seen them at night, no helmets, no lights, no reflectors on the bikes at all. They just had an accident in a Clifton last week where a kid was killed on one of these. There was an accident in Belva, I believe, where a kid was killed. So forget about the stiff fines and the penalties. So forget about the stiff fines and the penalties. Please don't make your son or daughter a statistic here in Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
A resolution adopting the Nutley Police Department rules and regulations, whereas the rules and regulations of the department were previously adopted. Whereas the Commissioner of Public Safety has updated the rules and regulations of the police department to be in conformance with current regulations and standards. And whereas the township attorney has received the recommendation, certain changes which have been incorporated into the rules and regulations of the police department now therefore be resolved by the mayor and commissioners, Township of Nutley, in the county of our state of New Jersey, and Nutley Police Rules and Regulations is hereby adopted and will be effective.
Oh, that is, needs are passed.
I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, this, before I vote on this one, this is for our accreditation. And just a reminder to everybody here, everybody in the public, that Nutley has been an accredited department. We were one of the first in Nutley. It's a painstaking work. I want to thank everybody in public safety who has been working on it. But if you get into any kind of litigation in court with a police officer, the first thing a judge will ask is your department accredited now? And if no, why not? So Nutley's been on the map for a while, and I commend everybody involved. I, I, I vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, family had to cancel participation in programs offered, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property is determined a need to refund families, now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. One-twenty-one Harrison Street, Apartment Two, for basketball in the amount of fifty dollars, forty-five in Twistle Avenue for softball, in the amount of ninety dollars, and fifty-seven East Center Street for travel softball, in the amount of ninety dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas in nineteen forty-nine, the legislature set aside the last Friday of April as Arbor Day to promote the planting of trees and to encourage the protection of our forest from fires and pests that destroy the beauty and usefulness of the woodlands. And whereas half of New Jersey's total land area is forested or tree-covered, and whereas trees play an important role in the ecosystem in which we live, and trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil caused by wind and water, clean the air we breathe and the water we drink, produce oxygen, provide habitat for birds and wildlife, and reduce heating and cooling costs by moderating temperature. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper for fine literature, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees provide increased property value, enhance economic viability, and pleasing aesthetic qualities to long streets and properties in municipalities. And whereas tree planting in yards and farms and schoolyards and parks and along streets and highways creates an enduring heritage for generations that follow. And whereas the Township of Nutley has completed its thirty-fifth year as a member of Tree City USA. And whereas I, Commissioner Mauro G. Tucci, Director of Parks and Public Property of Township of Nutley, do hereby proclaim May four, two thousand and twenty-four as Arbor Day in the community of Nutley, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our town's urban forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Before I move this, I just want to add one thing to this, that to date, we have planted approximately four thousand trees in the Township of Nutley. I probably move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization. Nutley Parent Advocacy Network, license number twenty-three twenty-four, on-premises merchandise raffle, and license number twenty-four twenty-four, on-premises fifty-fifty raffle. Both to be held Friday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association, license number twenty-five twenty-four, on-premises merchandise raffle will be held Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk of the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. The municipal clerk has authorized to mention said licenses. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Anybody in the public like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none? I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The time is now ten oh four.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Uh, real.